Good afternoon. We are going to reconvene with our Committee of the Whole. We have seven items in front of us today. The first one, it will be by the Bellingham Police Department. The Bellingham Police Department began using body-worn cameras in 2014. Since that time, 34 police officers have been issued body-worn cameras for on-duty use. The department will mandate the use of body-worn cameras by all uniformed personnel on July 1st, 2016. Chief Cook and the department staff will provide a current statistics on program usage, cost, policy changes, and impacts on officer and citizen interaction. And with that, I’m going to turn it over to you, Chief Cook. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. Before I begin, I’d like to make one announcement, just to make you aware. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It’s a period of time when we recognize the contributions that our dispatchers and call-takers provide to both the police department and the fire department through the Wattcom Dispatch Center and Prospect. So I thought I’d bring that to your attention, let you know. They are an integral part of what we do. They are our true first responders, as they are the ones that receive those calls from the community where we’re trying to render some assistance of some type. And with that, let me begin the presentation. As you may recall, our department began a body-worn camera program officially back in 2014, and I thought it was time to bring you up to speed as to where the program is and where we’re going. So during this presentation, we’re going to cover these following topics: the chronological order of the program, what the program costs have been thus far, what our data storage and public records efforts have looked like, what impacts, if any, on our use of force, what impacts on criminal case prosecutions, both at the municipal and county level. And I’ve brought some additional information on other body-worn camera field uses. I think it’s interesting for you to see this list. And at the end, if you have any questions, we’ll be glad to address those. We began our program with a pilot in January of 2014. It was a 90-day pilot program. We tested six cameras. During that time, we made some evaluations of what was being offered by vendors across the country, and at that point in time, decided that if we had chose to go to body-worn cameras, we would look at the TASER system. We did that in September of 2014. Prior to officially implementing the voluntary program, we purchased 40 cameras. These were only issued to 18 officers. We were on a voluntary-use program at the time. At this point in time, we have 34 of our officers utilizing body-worn cameras. We originally thought we could implement the program with 40 cameras. However, we found in the deployment that the upload time for videos that were created, as well as the battery-charging time, did not fit our patrol schedule, did not allow sufficient time for that upload to occur. Just to give you an example, for every minute of video we create, it takes a minute to upload it. So if you have eight hours on a camera, it takes a full eight hours to upload that camera. Since that program began, or the program we’re currently under began, we began to evaluate what the effects were on our department. We heard from our community, and quite frankly, what we heard from our community was very positive, both from the standpoint of why we chose to go to body-worn cameras, the purposes behind them, to not only protect our officers, but to also protect our citizens, provide an unbiased look at what occurs during a particular incident. It’s our decision to now move to the next phase, and that is to require mandatory use by all uniformed personnel beginning in July of this year. As a consequence, we’ve bought additional cameras. There are 110 currently in our inventory. These cameras are slated to be used by all uniformed personnel. We do have some cameras issued to our parking enforcement staff. And we also have cameras issued to individuals in the department who may be assigned to plainclothes assignments, but on occasion work in a uniform, either on an overtime basis or a special assignment basis. So when an officer in this department is deployed in the field, wearing a uniform, they will be wearing a body-worn camera as well. To give you a brief overview of what our costs have been, and that top line, if you will keep in mind, this includes the hardware, meaning cameras, the recording device, the docking stations, and all that goes with those docking stations, as well as the software that we purchased for the program. So the initial investment in 2014 was $130,000. We have since spent an additional $100,000 this year for the additional cameras, bringing our inventory to 110. In 2016, I’m sorry, I said “this year,” I meant “last year.” In 2016, we spent approximately $85,000 in upgrades to the program to include some software improvement, to include some additional docking stations, because we had to go to banked docking stations. We couldn’t have individual docking stations. Total is about $315,000 since 2014. 2014, I’m sorry. The next line, I think, is more important in contrasting what costs will be like. For ’17 and ’18, these are projected costs for the data storage and any software updates. We have bought the hardware. We won’t need to replace it until the hardware is three years old. What we’re currently working on is trying to come up with a new contract where we consolidate the first contract from 2014 and the second contract from 2015, combine them into a standalone agreement, so we can get some of our total costs down. I think this is the one area that provided the greatest amount of conversation and discussion for both our department, as well as the state, and particularly at the legislative level. This top area, where under data storage, is to March of this year. And you’ll note that there are over 9,000 videos that we’ve created since the program began. 4,922 of those are still actively in storage. Now, this says within a 90-day retention period. That’s how long we keep a video unless we determine that video has use in a criminal case, has use in regards to the investigation of a citizen complaint, or is requested under a public records request. And you may remember a gentleman by the last name of Clemmons, from down in the Seattle area, made a request statewide of a number of us for every video we had created. So over 2,000 of that 4,000 videos that you see in the system are the result of a public records request from one individual. We now have to keep those 2,200 videos that he requested for a period of two years. The next area on that slide is our average per day of data upload. So it kind of gives you a general idea of how many videos we may generate on an average 24-hour period. Some days it’s less, some days it may be zero, and others it may be two or three times that average. One of the areas that we were most interested in, and I think from a public standpoint the community is interested in, is what effect the body-worn cameras have on behavior of both citizens and our officers. This slide represents the number of what we refer to as responses to threat that our officers have used body-worn cameras in. Now, remember, our program is currently voluntary, so not every officer in the department wears a body-worn camera yet. There were over 2,000 activations to scenarios where we had a threat involved. Either the person was acting out, had already assaulted someone, was threatening to assault someone, or was threatening harm to themselves or others. That number represents more than individual incidents. It represents the total number of videos created at a number of incidents, because we may have more than one officer wearing a body-worn camera. Each video is counted as a separate item or record in our system. Of those 2,300 videos, total videos, we had 182 incidents where we responded to a threat and we had to use force. Force can be the mere going hands-on with someone, physical manipulation to get them under control. It can be something as simple as the mere pointing of a TASER, or the pointing of a firearm. It doesn’t mean that the devices were used, or the weapons were used. It just means that the presence was indicated, and the person was made aware of the officer’s intention to use those devices if necessary. What further encouraged us to move to a mandatory program was this next number, where we had no body-worn camera activations when force was actually used in a response to threat call. And we had 63 of those incidents. Frankly, I prefer that we not have any that are not recorded. But this was a voluntary program, still continues to be. I think you’ll see that number substantially decrease, if not be entirely eliminated in the future. Our officers do tell us that they have witnessed or observed changes in behavior when people are made aware that there are body-worn cameras being utilized. And I’d like to think that statistically, our use-of-force rate has declined. But I’ll, I need to remind you that this is not the only program we implemented during this time period. We implemented the use of body-worn cameras after 2014, but at the same time period, we added additional training. We added additional de-escalation training for our officers. We went through critical incident training with our officers, and just recently completed implicit bias training with our officers. So I believe those things in combination have all contributed to a reduction in some of our use-of-force cases. This headline, I think you may recall, was an incident we had a year ago, where our officers using less lethal devices took a gentleman into custody who was having mental health issues, threatening to do himself harm or others harm with a large knife. And this is one of those incidents, as part of that 63 number, that frankly, I was disappointed we did not have an officer on the scene with a camera, so we could show how our personnel reacted to that incident and how well they handled it. This is a list of other field uses of our body-worn cameras. Our policy requires that an officer turn them on at any occasion where there is enforcement action, or it’s an enforcement effort. However, sometimes the officers may turn them on because they believe something could happen, or the situation calls for some type of documentation. What I would like to draw your attention to is that fifth item from the top, mental health incidents. There were over 280 of those incidents where we had a body-worn camera record what occurred between the officer and the individual. Between January and December, or since January of 2015 and December of 2015, we answered 572 calls involving individuals suffering from mental health issues. I think that gives you an idea of how large the problem is, we are all aware of in our community, but how frequently our officers are dealing with issues involving persons with mental health issues. Investigative contacts, that’s another high number. What that number represents is proactive activity by our officers, who may be in their patrols, see some suspicious activity, or an individual, and they make a contact, and that contact is documented through a body-worn camera. And last but not least, that very large number is all contacts where the officers have decided that they need to activate the camera, whether it be because it’s an enforcement issue, or there’s something that the officer believes creates the need. It’s interesting how varied these different uses are, but I think it also reflects what our officers experience on a day-to-day basis in the myriad types of calls that they handle. And with that, I’d be glad to answer any questions in regards to the program.
Council, questions? Michael.
Let me start with the fact that I think there was a state law that was just passed this last session that had to do with retention. And it seemed to me to be kind of having kind of a negative outcome, rather than what was intended. And I think you showed the example of it. We had a public records request, and now we’re keeping a bunch of records, which we otherwise would not keep.
Correct.
And I think the whole reason why we would destroy the videos is we’re trying to safeguard people’s privacy.
True.
If we record ordinary behaviors that we have no reason to keep a record of, we should get rid of those records. We should safeguard people’s property. And now it looks like we’re maybe keeping a bunch of videos that have no particular law enforcement need. What was the change in state law? It seemed to me it was kind of one of those kind of rules where it required us to keep records that may be invaded from people’s privacy.
There was another, the legislature looked at that issue in a different manner, and the gentleman that made the request of us and a number of other agencies for all videos merely made the request because he could. His underlying motivation was, he wanted to show how susceptible people’s privacy issues were under body-worn camera videos. But he went about it, in my opinion, in a very strange way.
He kind of committed the crime he didn’t want to happen.
Correct. So as a result, the legislature has mandated that before you can ask for a body-worn camera video, you have to meet certain criteria. You either have to be an individual that’s involved in that incident, or demonstrate that you have a material interest in that video. You might be an attorney, or you may be someone who has a legal justification to have it. But you can’t just merely go to a city and say, “I want every video that you’ve created under this program.” You have to identify the specific video, and you have to indicate how your interest plays into that request.
Okay, good. That sounds a lot better, because I didn’t like the idea of us being forced to keep records that we didn’t want to keep. I do have one other kind of comment, really. There was an excellent piece of a series of videos online, I think it was in New York Times, on body-worn cameras. And it was kind of a quiz that you could take. You viewed a body-worn camera recording, and then you were asked, “What just happened?” And what looked like a fight was actually two people dancing. The police officer danced with another fellow, and you couldn’t tell. Or there was a case where a police officer was backing up away from someone who got out of a car, and it looked like the officer might have been pushed, or shoved, or whatever. But another view of it, the officer had just tripped over his own feet. And the rule I took away from that is that body-worn cameras aren’t an unbiased look, that was the word you looked, but they’re really most reliable when you have some distance from the subject. In each of these cases, where there was a distant camera, it was a pretty reliable picture. Only the ones that were up in the face. And I guess that’s why I really appreciate what you’re saying about having more than one officer with a camera. If someone’s close to one officer, you may get a confusing view, but the second officer’s camera might show the truer picture. What this exercise really showed me is that one camera alone isn’t necessarily the answer to everything.
I’m familiar with the videos you talk about. That was, they weren’t dancing, they were chest bumping.
Okay, whatever. Chest bumping.
And from the view of the individual wearing the camera, it looked like a violent encounter, but then when you got it from a more stepped-back, couple-three-yards difference, you could see there was just two males chest bumping. So yes, there is a benefit to having more than one camera in a particular incident. And that’s what drives some of our interest in making sure that all our officers are wearing them.
Councilmember Murphy, then Hamill, then Bornham.
I just wanted to express appreciation for furthering this throughout the police department, because I love the way that it helps protect our community, it helps protect the officers. But also, you know, we’re just in a unique era where people are constantly questioning the line of police work, and I’m glad that we have the proof of how we handle these situations.
I’m glad you mentioned that. We just had one yesterday evening. It was a very violent encounter with an individual who was obviously suffering from some mental health issues, but also some self-medicated drug use. And it took four officers to bring this individual under control. During that encounter, two of the officers were wearing body-worn cameras. Now, again, to your example, in this case, both of their cameras, they were wearing the type that goes on a pair of glasses, were knocked off. So we didn’t get the kind of video we would like to, but we do have audio. So there is a benefit there. A lot of the officers are moving away from the head-mounted camera to the fixed torso device, simply because of that. The other is more likely to get knocked off or damaged.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation today. I did want to see how you separate out, there’s no substance use disorder-related charges here in this list, and no domestic violence. Do they just fall into other categories here that are in your, in your list?
Could you repeat the question, Mr. Hamill?
Sure. You’ve called out specifically mental health-related charges. I just don’t see a substance use disorder charge with individuals on some type of drug or domestic violence.
No, we differentiated in the report. We indicate whether we believe that the person is suffering from the effects of some drug. But we classify the original call as a mental health issue, if we have that information. Sometimes we don’t, and we realize it when we get on the scene.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, a comment and a question. One related to your comment about last night’s incident, or whatever. Over the last couple of months, there’s been a couple incidents reported in the Herald that, that looked like if they would have happened in other jurisdictions, it could have resulted in the use of deadly force, because of weapons, other kinds of things. And our officers handled it in alternative methods, did a great job with it, and no one was hurt with it, or at least no one was shot, or deadly force was not needed. And I’ve mentioned it before, but I want to raise it again, since you’re here, you know, to compliment your officers on that, and for you, the great job of training and use of that, because, you know, our officers do seem to know that of trying other methods before shooting first, as has happened in some, in some other areas. And so I want to really, you know, give praise to the officers for handling those kind of situations that way.
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate that. I think it’s reflective of the internal culture of the department, but it’s also a reflection of how well we try to view things in, in the same way that our citizens would like us to, that they want us to police our community in a certain way. So.
Yeah, and we really appreciate that. The other is, a question was, just out of curiosity, in September, there were 40 cameras purchased, and it was voluntary, 18 officers signed up. What were the concerns? Were there concerns by officers about not wanting to use them? I just, you know, out of curiosity. Because now that we’re going mandatory, are those concerns still there, or?
Well, I think the concerns are, many of which have been mentioned by members of the council. The officers were as concerned about personal privacy, they realized and recognized that there are times when we’re in people’s homes, at a worst time in their life, and to be video-recording that incident, there were concerns about, under the prior standards for public records release, the potential for that kind of information going out to individuals who really had no legitimate reason to, to have it. The other was mentioned, that these are not a panacea. They only provide a partial glimpse of what occurred, and sometimes it’s not a full view of what’s happened. So there was concerns about misinterpretation of what the video did show, or an expectation much too high that the video would provide all the answers to any question that someone might have about an officer’s actions. There were those concerns. Quite frankly, there were concerns about the reliability of the equipment. And like any new piece of equipment, if you look at our officers currently, and look at all the things that they carry, you know, early in my career, it was a sidearm, some ammunition, and a set of handcuffs. And now, the officers carry multiple different tools on their belt, and to add one more to have to worry about, it was a concern for them. So, but I equate this with similar to the TASERS. I know when those first came out, we had a lot of concerns and questions. There still are some. But it was another piece of equipment that we found useful. It helped us avoid deadly force situations on occasion, but it also created some questions about what we were doing.
Yep. One other question. Have there been any problems to date of, since, since it’s been voluntary, and they’re not, the cameras aren’t running all the time, of cameras not being activated when there have been incidences where you might have thought there should have been activation?
That is another concern that, I believe, caused some hesitation on the part of our officers, because they felt like if they carried it, now they were obligated to have to meet that policy, meaning you had to turn it on. And some of the situations they respond to are so quickly developing that you’re trying to get into that situation, and you forget, or you may have, it requires a specific tap to this button. If you miss it, you think you may have turned it on, but you, you might not. So there was concerns about that as well. Do I believe a mandatory use will solve that entirely? No. I believe it’ll reduce the number of times we don’t have video, but there are going to be, on those rare occasions where the officer thinks they’ve turned it on, and they may have missed the switch, or, as happened last night, we have a camera damaged, and maybe we lose that record. But so far, I haven’t seen that. And thus far, what I am hearing from the officers, particularly those that were skeptical at first, is they like what they’ve learned by using them, and now I think if you try to take them away from them, they’d be pretty upset about it.
Great. Thank you very much.
You’re welcome.
Councilmembers, any additional questions? No? Thank you very much, Chief Cook, and we appreciate the work you do for our community.
Thank you.
The next item for us today is a discussion of the FAST Report, Capitol Facilities Task Force Report, and the Administrative Structure Review. This discussion follows the March 21st, 2016 Council briefing on the FAST Report, Capitol Facilities Task Force Report, and Administrative Structure Review. I did read this at home first. Both department heads and administration are available to answer council inquiries as to the implementation of the recommendation contained in the reports, as well as the subsequent measures taken to reduce costs associated with the service delivery. And I’m going to turn it over to Rick Suckler, our Planning and Community Development Director.
Good afternoon, members of the council. We come before you today, the department head team, to be able to provide our responses to any questions you may have identified regarding the materials we’ve presented over the last several council meetings. As councilors recall, over the course of the past number of years, a series of studies and reports were prepared to look organizationally at potential savings, economies, consolidations, and opportunities to ensure continued service delivery to the community at the high levels we maintain. Those reports, while developed in a sense of urgency, many of the recommendations were implemented, but circumstances changed. We find ourselves now, along with many cities in Washington, looking back at those past reports and saying, what’s been initiated, what has been completed, what was started and then abandoned, and what didn’t get started at all. In the past couple of weeks, we’ve looked at those. We came to the conclusion, which we presented to the council, that a number of processes still have merit, and that they should be considered as they’re still applicable to the circumstance we find ourselves in, looking in the future. And as we are in the process of looking at our comprehensive plan, it prompted this discussion. I am joined today by a number of department heads. We are here to answer any questions you might have on those prior documents, to provide clarifications on status and outcomes. The purpose of that largely is a way of setting the stage for work to be facilitated at your workshop this coming Saturday, to look at those processes that would have merit, that should be initiated in advance of any, a greater sense of urgency than we currently have now, and to be completed hopefully prior to the crossing of those lines of reserves and expenditures. and expenditures. That's anticipated now about two to three years out. So, I'll turn to my colleagues and to administration, should you have questions.
Council members? You've been very thorough, Rick.
Oh, that we are. We're pleased. We look forward to coming forward with a recommendation and a summary. And just so you know, in sort of a preview, those have been excerpted from the prior work, clarified to update them as to current circumstances, and we will be presenting an administration's recommendation on which paths to pursue, and that's for discussion and consideration by this body.
Michael?
If I think I understood you correctly, it sort of anticipates my question. So, the FAST report is the one that had numerous, numerous recommendations, small, big, large, some completed, some not. You said you'd be bringing forward an updated, a list of uncompleted tasks that might still be doable. Are those mostly coming from the FAST list?
It comes from the FAST report, it comes from the Capitol Facilities Task Force, it comes from the work from Peter Moye, that presented to this body and recommended a number of approaches, and it comes from the administrative studies that were done. And I think what you'll see is there'll be sort of the heavy lift, the fairly intensive programs that are big efforts, and you have to make a reasoned choice, because we can't do them all, and a number of things that are ongoing, that are currently in the works. And when you look, you have to look at the totality, saying, boy, these are a bunch of efforts we're working on. Which is the best blend for the community and the highest likelihood of success? So, that's where they came from, all from those documents, called out in truth to still be applicable today and show positive outcomes. We'll have an analysis included of the relative pros and cons of each one, but, and a recommendation on the suite of those we think are complementary and useful to proceed on, but it's council's purview to look at the various approaches and say, did we miss anything? Should we add one to the list? Are there some we should investigate more fully? I should also say that as we do enter into that period of investigation and development of these, these are fairly intensive efforts, there's a likelihood that one or more of them will be, reach a point of not being able to pass. In essence, you get down the road, you find out, this specific approach just doesn't have the traction, or there's a hindrance, or there are issues in front of us. That's time well spent, because from the point we have now, we think it has merits, but as you go further into it, you peel back the layers of the onion, it may not warrant us to proceed. There may be some in roadblock that we can't overcome. That's why you approach multiple fronts on these, as you go forward.
The mayor, and then councilman, okay, councilmember Little Question?
Thanks, Kelly. Sorry to put you off. Thank you, Rick, for that answer. I think my reaction to the Capitol Facilities Task Force is a little bit different. Terry was involved in that, I was a little bit involved in that as well. What I really love about that, and I think Mayor Kelly enjoys this, is that it kind of defines certain principles that are broadly applicable, and some of those principles are basically just find ways of not having to spend money by understanding why it is you're driven into a corner to spend money. I think the jail discussion is an example of that. Jail's not, wasn't viewed as a Capitol Facilities kind of expense, but by understanding why we have so many people going through our jail, we can figure out how to reduce that number, still achieve public safety and save dollars. So, you know, the task force one was, I don't know, was richest in its ideas rather than in specific recommendations. I guess I'd like to see that sort of idea-rich approach that comes from that task force report kind of applied across domains, and I think that's exactly what's behind the administration's approach to the level of service, kind of understanding fundamentally what's driving the costs, rather than just figure out how to cut corners.
I'll let Rick add his, his comments to this, but I think you're right, Michael. The, the point is, you have to have a place by which to measure what we're, what we're delivering to the public and how well we're doing it. And I, I've read both of the reports, so I think there's something in all of them that are valuable, even the administrative one that we did, and certainly Peter Moye's report, which came up with more of the solutions, in some ways, than the analysis on why we're here instead of here. But I think that's the discussion, the best discussion that I hope the council has, is not just the, what are we going to do, but understanding why we have to do it. And the, the point that I wanted to make was, as we go through this, what I'd like to have happen is that we're not setting up a council four years from now, or eight years from now, from having to start from square one, all over again, but that we build a process where we're, we're, have a regular review of the stuff that Rick has been putting together with the team, and that it, you know, we're always looking for the efficiencies, and we're always looking for the duplications and the gaps, and we're constantly asking that question of why. And, and part of it is, when we don't, when we add new things on top of the old things, and then end up not doing some of the essential things as well. And I think that came up today a little bit on the, the paving and things that the public expects us to do, but when it's competing for general fund dollars, sometimes that doesn't, you know, that doesn't happen, or the affordable housing that we're trying to build. So, I think it'd be great, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation on Saturday, and I think Rick set it up very well to have some specifics for the council to discuss, so it's not all up here, because we, some of us like, like, not too many facts, but at least some, so we can move forward. But it also gives an opportunity, Rick, I think, to, to discuss the why.
Right. We've prepared some guiding principles that we've called from those studies, that whatever paths you select, those principles will be still applicable across the board, and we'll have those for you to take a look at, too. Our operative outcome would be, should we have general direction at your workshop, we'd follow it up in a regular meeting, then we'd prepare sort of a process for each of the tracks that are selected. But those principles would work for any of the tracks. It's, you know, what's best for the community in the long term, don't sacrifice the long term benefit for short term gain, what's the best balance of level of service, and you'll have a chance to consider those.
Any additional comments, questions? Oh, thank you for putting this together, Rick. We appreciate that.
I, I should say, I'm part of a team of department heads who've worked tirelessly on this.
Well, we think you do everything. Yeah. Thank your team and your staff so much. Our next item in front of us today is a discussion of the Waterfront District Implementation Status Report. Our staff will provide an update on the projects for the city of Bellingham that is leading in the waterfront district, including the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street, Wacom Waterway Park, and coordination with the developers selected for the downtown waterfront Harcourt. And I'm going to turn this discussion over to Tara Sundin. And it looks like she's going to be joined by Leslie, and I've got Ted, but you don't look like Ted at all.
Fritz is going, Fritz is going to kick things off for us, and he'll be giving you an update on Granary and Laurel Street, and Leslie on Wacom Waterway Park, and I'll wrap things up with a few updates on port activities and Harcourt development activities.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Freeman Anthony, Public Works, and we're here to give you just a quick snapshot of where we've been at with the, a couple of key parts of the waterfront development. We won't be covering any of the cleanup or the ongoing work that's going on there right now, that's largely a part-led effort, but we've effectively, I think we've moved past pre-design, and we're into, we're moving quickly towards a 30% design milestone for both the park and the roads, so that's why we're catching up to the day-to-day. Talk briefly about Granary Avenue and Laurel Street, and then I'll hand it over to Leslie. This is the first, you know, really large piece of infrastructure that we will do down at the port, at the waterfront redevelopment. It's very exciting. At this point, we've got some black and white drawings, and we've now added some green to them, and, let's take a look at that. There we go. Yeah, let's get some lights down there. So, most of you are familiar with this graphic in some form, because you took a look at the interlocal, which revised the first phase of infrastructure. So, that was a pretty key move, but we worked with both the port and the developer to get an alignment that's simple, we like it, and now, it's a matter of really just getting down and designing and permitting this road for construction in '17. We're looking forward to 30% documents being submitted this month, and finishing things up probably this fall. There will be some substantial permitting with this street project, but we're also moving quickly in order to basically support ongoing developer activity, specifically getting access to the Granary building from Granary Street. We do plan to build it in two different phases. The first phase will be about 300 or 400 feet from Rotor down into the site. That allows us to activate the Granary building while we continue with the balance of Granary and Laurel, including working with the railroad well through '17. So, hopefully, open all the way through the site, probably second quarter '18, but a bunch of activity there to support the Granary building. I think what's really exciting is our conceptual section, so we're going to just take a look at a couple of these. We went to the subarea plan for our basic cross-section design, because that's what we all worked so hard on that subarea plan for, was to get a good starting point. So, what you see here are some colorful sketches from the landscape architect showing what our baseline design is now. This should look pretty familiar. This is pretty much what you would see on a new arterial street in Bellingham. You've got two transit lanes, and by transit, I mean cars, buses, what have you. You've got bike lanes, and these are buffered bike lanes. Right now, we just show them with a painted buffer. You have on-street parking, which we've heard from the developer is desirable, given the forecasted land use, and then, nice wide pedestrian areas. The full right-of-way width, and this is also in the subarea plan, is a full 85 feet, so that's about five feet wider than Holly, but not as wide as railroad, for perspective. So, as you can see, we've got trees, and all these kind of details we'll be working through with all the city departments and the port and the developer as we, as we, you know, move forward into the more detailed design, but this is our starting point, but we can, we can have more fun. I mean, this is a green, this is a brown field, we're starting from scratch here, so we, in talking to the developer, have decided that we think there's a good opportunity for a cycle track here. And I think the real big driver for this is, because of the location of Granary, the street, there's no turning movements unless you have an amphibious vehicle. You can't take a right-hand turn when you're heading southwest down Granary. So, that's an often opportunity to put in a cycle track because of that, really because of that lack of, lack of conflict points. So, the developer was certainly supportive of that, thought that that was, you know, that made a lot of sense, and, so, this is what we'd like to do. We've got a bit of work to do before we know that this is what we will do. Probably the most complicated things, thing is, how do you take a cycle track and safely get cyclists to go out of that onto Rotor? So, you've got a cycle track, you've got two vehicles, or two cyclists together on one side of the street, you bring them to an intersection that will have a light, but we've never done anything like this before. We don't, we don't have anything on how to take a cycle track into an arterial like Granary. So, there's some stuff for us to figure out yet, and that's what the rest of this design process will be. We envision the cycle track being on the opposite side of the Board Mill Building on Laurel Street, so that means it'll be in the north, kind of the northeast side of Laurel Street. We do envision some, the Board Mill Building being a developed, you know, probably the second building to be developed down there, so that'll be good. There will possibly be some left-hand turn movements in there by vehicles, and so that'll be something else that we need to figure out and kind of design around. If you look closely at these cross-sections, you'll see that there's sort of a gray shaded in area, which we may need to do reconfigurations in the future. We'll try to future-proof these designs, so let's say you begin to get a lot of left-hand turn movements on a certain intersecting street. If you hop back here a few slides, in the future, you may see some more, you know, as the waterfront develops, there'll be more teeing in of various streets. We'll future-proof the design, so when the time comes, we need a light or a left-hand turn pocket, we can adjust around that. But we're really quite excited about this. This also can, keeps basically the same amount of pedestrian space that the standard bike lanes on the streets would. It just puts that bike traffic on one side, allows for basically a door swing zone between the cycle track and the parking on that particular side. And so, that's really what I have to share with you today, and I'm happy to take some questions. You want to do those right now? Yeah, and, and then I can turn it over to Leslie for the parts discussion, which is really more, much more interesting.
I'm going to start with a question, just because I'm trying to compile the notes for our report out this evening, and I want to make sure I have this correctly, and I'm a little confused, and the pre-design is complete, but we're at 30% design. Can you help my planning, the language here, so I can explain that to people who don't understand it like me?
Absolutely. Pre-design is the phase where we took a look, we take a look at all the sort of higher level regulatory things, we take a look at the cleanup that the port's doing, all their planned capping, and at a very high level, we look at basically what the, you know, what the sort of guiding, important technical information is for the road. We looked at sea level rise, and we looked at, you know, long-term adjacent connection points, railroad stuff, what happens when we rebuild Cornwall Bridge. So, that's all your pre-designed stuff. There is a report, it's very exciting, if you want one, I can send it over. It's called the Basis of Design Report. And so, that's what we've gotten through. We've spent probably the last four or five months doing that, which just really sets the, sets the high-level constraints for your road design. At this point, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, the 30% design is in the Granary building, not the entire, or that is the entire project?
Everything I'm talking about is the road, not the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, continue if there is something else you want to do.
Sure. And so, this is 30% here, which is, we're actually having, we're taking the opportunity to begin to put some dimensions to different things, place some features within the right-of-way. So, the pre-design happened basically in the fall of '15, and now, we're, we're moving heavy into the design phase.
And then, the construction for work spring 2017, is that the street and foundational structure, or that is included in the Granary building as well?
That's just only Granary Street.
Only the street.
Yeah. So, this is what we're doing to basically support...
What the developer is, will do on...
Right. And by, by support, we mean just people being able to get there and park, and walk over to the Granary building and something like that.
The developer would like to start construction on the Granary building this year.
Okay.
So, they're in, might as well just throw this out now. They're in for permits now. They've received permits to do emergency repairs. The building hasn't been taken care of and needs some structural work, so they've gotten permits to, to do that, and I believe they are getting bids and things of that nature for emergency repair. But later this year, you'll see the building under construction, and they'd like to open the building spring, summer of next year, which is why we're trying to time our roadway infrastructure and park infrastructure to align with their opening of the building.
Council members, I'm not sure who was first here, so we all let you, do you know? Okay. Councilmember Barker.
I'm sure, I'm sure it was me. Since, since we get to design this from scratch, I, I've been to quite a few neighborhood meetings, and the most common thing I hear about is traffic and traffic calming. So, I see that you did some trees, and that there's going to be some separation between the pedestrians. I don't, I don't see bus pullouts at this point, you're probably not that direct, but what, what specific things, since there are now, it's just two straight roads, that people tend to like to go pretty fast on, what, what kinds of things are you guys doing in your dream building?
Well, if you do go to the subarea plan, the subarea plan does actually have a center turn lane, and probably the biggest thing we've done is not immediately build that, because, and that keeps the streets just tighter. So, that's probably the biggest thing that we've done. The developer has expressed a lot of interest in basically periodic pedestrian crossings that are more than just a sidewalk, and so, we're going to work hand-in-hand with them. They've got some pretty cool ideas on some aesthetic stuff to, I think, honor some of the, the old planked roads, and so, I think you'll, as we move deeper in design, you'll see some of those features, but those are the ones that pop into my mind. The main thing is keeping the corridor fairly tight, a lot of pedestrian space, and, and just limiting, we, we have 11-foot lanes, although the subarea plan shows 12. So, there's, and, we knew we could take a foot off each one, and that, that still works for transit, so. take a foot off each one, and that still works for transit, so we went ahead and did that as a narrowing feature.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Thanks, Mickey. Well, I'm really appreciative and excited to see the bike infrastructure you've put in, and the two-way bike lane, that's even more than I hoped for. But that's actually what I'm asking about today. It has to do actually with the width of the pedestrian sidewalk. Some of the greatest city spaces, we're talking 20 years in the future, have rather wide sidewalk space. Looking at that drawing, it looks like that sidewalk is pretty darn wide. Can you tell me?
It's 16 and 1/2 feet wide, and that's from your basic curb back to your lot line. So that's pretty similar to, you know, to Holly in those zones. The, we're showing a five-foot tree well here. General practice these days is to try to widen your tree wells basically for tree health. So out of that 16 and 1/2 feet, you've got five dedicated towards a tree, minus half a foot for the curb, so that's about 11 foot of passable space. 11 feet should give you enough frontage space to have a sidewalk café, maybe six or seven feet wide, and then you can still accommodate your five-foot ADA through there as well. So this is pretty similar to what you would, what you would find, trying to think of a good example.
The sidewalk in front of Black Drop and Temple, that's 17. So it's very consistent, and that's a great urban feel there.
That's perfect, because I mean, you and I know Tara, we've been to these talks recently, and experts on creating lively downtowns often has to do with what the businesses can do right in front of their establishment, officially in the right-of-way, in terms of sidewalk cafés, or just benches, or potted plants. I mean, if you don't have a wide enough sidewalk, it's hard to have that whole liveliness. And looking 20 years ahead, we're going to be really happy you built in that much space.
Harcourt's actually expressed interest in varying those sidewalks a little bit and trying to make some perhaps wider and others narrower, subject to forecasted land use. And also taking into account, like, basically where the sun is. Try to widen the sidewalk where the sun is. If you've got a sidewalk that's on the northeast or northwest face, maybe that's not the best place for you to allocate that pedestrian area. Maybe you can get that on the other side, because that tends to be a better spot, and you're perhaps more likely to go look at some ground floor, you know, food service or retail, and maybe do office on the other side, because you're not going to have any frontage need there. Any others?
Councilmembers, any other questions? Councilmember Murphy.
Mine's a funny question. I'm trying to decide what my next bike purchase will be. Do you have any idea what the cycle track would consist of for the foundation?
Say it again.
Do you have any idea what the cycle track will be comprised of? Will it be gravel?
It will be a hardscape, so feel free to go for nice, efficient, skinny tires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barker. So when, I think it was Ted that came forward to talk to us a little bit about making an emergency change to the plan to line up these roads. Now that you're further into it, there was, there was a suggestion of cost. Are we still around what we thought that that cost would be?
In a few weeks, we'll get the 30% in with a cost estimate.
Okay.
And I'll, you know, probably go into a conference room all by myself. I'm going to close the door, and then I will look at it.
Okay.
If you can hear me, then it's probably more than we thought it was going to be.
Okay.
We're doing the best we can, given it's just, it's, we updated them about a year ago, and we gave it a sniff test with our consultants, and they said, "We think you're good now." It is a year later, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tara and Leslie, do you have, okay? Thank you, Fritz.
So next, we want to talk a little bit about the park, Watcom Waterway Park, Phase One. We completed our basis of design for this in 2014. We had a public meeting. We had three conceptual ideas, the public and staff and port and the developer, all liked the curvilinear concept, and we presented that to you. With the Granary Building going forward and the change in the road alignment, we're modifying the area that we're building in Phase One. We're going to include the Central Avenue Pier. We'll be doing our outreach in parallel with the street, so we may be able to do some public outreach together with the street, so everybody can see both projects together. We're planning on beginning construction early in 2017, hopefully by next January. We also want to provide access to the Granary Building from the central pier side and plan to have the park complete by the end of 2017. We asked the consultant to show us to modify the Phase One. It used to continue down behind the future buildings. You may recall, there was a building pad up at this end, and then we were going to have kind of a narrow park with access. We weren't going to do the Central Avenue Pier right away in Phase One, but with the Granary Building moving forward and planning to open next year, we want to provide this public space, non-motorized space, so this will be closed to vehicles and be for non-motorized access only. Make a nice plaza entrance, fill in this gap between the existing road and the building, so you can go in and out, have outdoor seating. And then we'll come around on the south side of the Granary Building and with a walkway that would go out to Granary Avenue. This is very conceptual. Haven't had a lot of input in this, but the other things we definitely want to do is have a ramp leading down to the water for hand-carry boats perhaps. And then the port is planning to do the transient moorage. So we'll be moving ahead now, engaging with our stakeholders, which includes the developer, the port, city staff, and our regulators, and also public, to talk about what do we want this park to be like? What kind of activities do we want to have here to activate this area? So that'll be our next step as we move towards our 30% design. So as Fritz said, we've completed our pre-design. This is now the area of Phase One, which is going to basically start about at this future development line and come up and include the pier. And this is about the property line between the Granary, the private property, and the public. So that's what we're looking at, and we're excited to be moving forward.
Any questions on that?
So I had a chance to meet with the parkour community in Bellingham, and I'm going to be forwarding you some design standards.
Parkour, not hardcore, right?
Parkour.
Parkour.
And I found it really interesting, because they've been talking with other communities, especially in dense urban settings, where when you do street furniture or park furniture, if you follow some basic guidelines, it can also transform into a parkour course. So I have that, and I just got back from vacation, so I'll be sending that to you. But I would hope, sometimes especially in really urban, dense spaces, really encouraging people to be active can be difficult. And if there is a way that we can bring that together, while maybe people won't want to be sitting, somebody might want to be exercising, I think that would be pretty great. So I'll get that to you as soon as we finish, and just wanted to pass that along.
Councilmember Barker, could you maybe define what a parkour is, so that the public knows what you're talking about?
Oh, you guys don't all know what parkour is. Well, maybe we could have a, somebody wanted to do a demonstration. Really, it's a pretty ingenious. If you think about some of the earlier stuff that we did on courses, where you would go and do some push-ups, and then you'd do some setups, and they used to have courses set out for you, this is taking it a step further, where people jump from one thing to another. There's varying heights, so that they can do flips off things. I mean, off those concrete bores, there's a really cool video of a guy doing one jump from a boar to the other, and then over the side. It's really common in other countries, and it's getting more and more common in larger cities, where they're actually putting concrete structures and wood structures right in the center of urban density, so that people can have the opportunity to really express themselves physically. So look it up, P-A-R-K-O-U-R.
Any other questions for Leslie in regards to parks? I just have a comment. I just want to say that I love that our Phase One has expanded and that we're going to use our pier. I'm also very excited that the port is going to put in a piece that allows for motorized vehicles, for people to come and visit us through our waterways and be able to come right to our downtown. So I think this is something we're all a little excited about. So thanks, Leslie. And also, I wanted to ask if the slides from this presentation, if somebody could email these to me, so I have these numbers and statistics in front of me tonight, so I can report out properly without making it up.
I'll leave you mine.
You have another part, Tara?
I'll leave you my coffee.
Okay.
One more slide here, just a few other updates. While the city's been doing design work and planning for our infrastructure, which will be delivered next year, the port has been doing a lot of work. And this is a big year for Bellingham's waterfront, Watcom Waterway. A $30 million cleanup project has been underway, and I think it should be wrapping up pretty soon. That's changed kind of the way things look down there, especially along the shorelines. The digester building has been demolished, and that certainly has changed the way things look. And the port has decided to keep the digesters there for now. The developer, Harcourt, is interested in them and just didn't want to demo them. And so there might be opportunities for all of us to have another discussion about the tanks at some point. And then GP West, that's the site that we refer to as the extension of our downtown. So if you think about where Harcourt is from the Board Mill kind of towards downtown, that site is being cleaned up this year as well by the port. They're going to start construction in June, and it's a pretty small project. It should be done within maybe six months or so, so in 2016. So there's a lot of progress happening at the port, which is already finally this site for development. And then Harcourt, I already mentioned the Granary Building. John Reed is actually here today. John is an architect, and he works for Harcourt Development. He is working on the design of this building, Granary. They are in for permits, and they're working through that process. They've been through design review, and like I said, hopefully we'll see construction workers in that building within the next few weeks. They're also exploring the Board Mill, and they have an interest in keeping the Board Mill, which we talked about as a reason for refining the alignment of the road. So Laurel Street is now ready to support the redevelopment of that building. So they're looking at feasibility of adding on to that building and looking at potential uses. So that work's going on as well. And then I also wanted to let you know that we are in conversations with Harcourt and the port. We always knew that once we had a developer selected and a developer interested in investing in our community, that they would probably want to make some changes to the plan. And so we are talking through some of those. I can tell you that their vision is consistent with the adopted plan of a downtown mixed-use, you know, extension of our downtown area. So that's scale, but they've got some feedback for us as far as the orientation of the roads and the park spaces as well. So I just wanted to let you know that we are having conversations with the developer about those, about the master plan, and we will keep you up to date on those discussions.
Councilmember Lillquist and Murphy.
Two small things that I want to keep track of from the old days of the planning. One, utility corridors and tunnels underneath those new roads. Are we building those nice and big and fat to run maybe fiber through as in private utilities, as well as our own public utilities?
The current utility master plan is going along with the road, the road design development, and we're actually encouraged that the developer would like us to look further at things like district energy. They're interested in that. We're actually talking to a couple of private companies about that. What we're hearing, though, is for the most part, a large utilidor isn't really economically useful. We'll be running conduit banks for all the fiber, plus a lot of spare conduit runs. So for smaller direct-pull, basically electrical kind of lines, we'll have a lot of, we'll have some redundancy there and some backup. We probably won't be doing a utilidor, a large concrete utilidor, because direct-bury pipes are, actually it helps insulate them better, and from an economic standpoint, we're probably not going to go in that direction.
Okay. And then the second thing is, there's some big pile of rubble and bricks down there, and one of the things we talked about during waterfront planning is reuse of materials. They appear to be sorted, kind of there's a brick-colored pile and another pile of different color. What are the port's plans with regard to reuse of those reclaimed materials? Is there any potty creation in our future, or what?
The, the GP West cleanup will be basically utilizing all the extra material on-site as either some sort of fill or part of the physical cap layer that their cleanup action plan requires. So all of that will be spread out in some strategic fashion to meet the Department of Ecology requirements. I don't think you'll see us reusing any of that in any of the road construction, mostly because you just, you already need it all for, just to get to your, the minimum grade that you want to be on down there, so.
So then, sorry, one final question. We talked about the final grade being different from what it is now up a few feet. Is that still in the plan for the new road? Now we're putting in a road. Is the grade going to be, how different is the road grade going to be from the current grade?
Towards Rotor, we'll obviously have to lift it up upwards of 10, 12 feet, and that'll be supported by a retaining wall. But working with the developer, we wanted to, we brought the alignment kind of back down to the site to get it lower as quickly as we could. Part of that was to facilitate Laurel in the existing Board Mill elevation. So that's only going to be a few feet higher in that area, and then you're going to ramp up as you go closer to Granary, the building, the road will come up higher. So you'll transition from basically a small fill slope of three or four feet down to the existing, to the developed, or to the private property. And then by the time you get up by Granary, it's going to be held up by a retaining wall, and so it'll be like a zero lot line retaining wall.
Councilmember Murphy.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I think it's interesting that community members of various ages have told me that they feel frustrated, that they don't think they'll see anything happen with the waterfront in their lifetime. So, and then when I doorbellled in 2013, so many of the community members just told me they just wanted to see any action on the waterfront, any kind of redevelopment. So I'm just glad we're finally at a point that in the very near future, we're going to start to show the community ways this redevelopment will go, and positive things that will benefit our community members. So thank you for this body of work.
I have one quick question. In regards to you, Fritz, you were mentioning the utilities, and we had that big conversation about eco-districts, one of them which includes water recapture and district energy. So were you saying that we are trying to go along those lines, or there's something in between that has been discussed?
We identified three district-specific utilities when we did the study last year, and the district water was basically a non-potable irrigation system that, on the cover, looked pretty good. So we're kind of proofing that out now, and that would be an irrigation line. Then the other two were the district hydro and the district energy. Both of those were in conversations with various private sector folks on how to deliver those.
Great. Okay, thanks. Councilmember Howell.
This is along Councilmember Murphy's point in terms of people wanting to know what's going on on the waterfront. And there was a slide up here just recently that said public outreach. I'm just wondering how that, how that occurs and when that happens.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to do more than one thing. Could you repeat your question?
I'm just wondering, on the slide, it mentioned that there was going to be some outreach to the public in terms of, you know, updating and letting folks know what's happening and when things are happening. I just wanted to know how that would occur.
Well, I think both with parks and public works, you want to answer that, Leslie?
We're going to have a steering committee, which will include members of the public that came to our public meeting that we had in 2014 and said they were interested in being more involved. Then we'll have, also have open houses that will maybe have in conjunction with public works, so we're showing the road and park together, because I think people will be interested in both of those things. So we're starting our public outreach very soon.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just add that the landscape architect for the park is also the one that will be on the, on the street. So the park sort of will be taking the lead, and the road, some of those design aspects will just sort of follow along with the road.
Well, and as you all are aware, we're doing the parks and the infrastructure, and the Harcourt and Port are doing the development part. So if, we could probably ask if there was participation in this, not just for parks and public works, but maybe for the development too. So that would, because some of the decisions that we're making now have to do with the developer and what works better for them. And so I don't think that would cause a problem at all. And that way, they get a little more well-rounded view of what And that way, they get a little more well-rounded view of what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Councilmember Parker.
Leslie, I was just reading over the pro-plan on my vacation, and I noticed that, it's a big document. So I noticed that a lot of the outreach and finding out from people what they want, it was 18 and over. And I'm interested in this process, because we do have this whole community that although they don't get a chance to vote, they still access all of these spaces. And so are there, is it common for parks especially to reach out to those under the age of 18 to ensure that these spaces are something that kids will want to ride transit to and be part of?
We try. It's hard to get them to come to a meeting. So sometimes we've gone out to schools, for example, especially if there's a park in a particular neighborhood, and asked kids to help design the playground. They're very interested in playgrounds. We want to look for activities on this site that will attract families. So whether it's a traditional playground, or an interactive art, or interactive water feature. So trying to engage them is our biggest issue, but we will try and do that.
I'd love to help with that if you do need any assistance.
Okay.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Anything else that you want to add, Tara, Leslie, and Anthony, and Mayor Kelly?
Well, I appreciate, I know you all appreciate the work the staff did, and I appreciate Roxanne and Dan mentioning it today. As you know, Tara did the project management for this. And I didn't think, I was the one in on the administrative side that said, please, before I die, do something. So I appreciate the dying part that you were all talking about. But we had a great waterfront team that included every department that has a stake in doing this. And I'll tell you, I was so impressed with what they did. And I appreciate you acknowledging that you are appreciative of it too, because it was really fabulous work. And we worked our best to work with the port to get an agreement that we could, that we could all live with. And I think you on the council that voted for this understand that it was not the easiest thing in the world, though I thought it was really good. And Seth was the chair, and Terry was the chair of the committee. And it really helped when we all worked together to make sure this happened. So when I look up there and it says 2017, we're going to have something? I'll tell you, I'm overjoyed. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for your work on that. Oh, yeah.
Just one comment, yeah. Gene and I, we've been talking about this for close to 16 years when we first started talking about it, you know. And so, yeah, we would really, I'm really looking forward to that Granary Building coming online and those other, and the parks thing, of being able to see that come to. We never thought it would ever come take this long, but we're ready.
Waterfront's not a four-letter word anymore.
All right, and that was for information only. Thank you again for all the staff and the team that has worked on that information and getting us to move forward. The next item in front of us is a resolution regarding establishing the Bellingham Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity Zone. The state, through the Model Toxins Control Act, also known as MTCA, has created a new tool to promote cleanup and redevelopment of brownfields. RCW 70.105D.150 authorizes cities to designate a brownfield area within their jurisdiction as a redevelopment opportunity zone, known as ROZ, because MTCA grants have become increasingly difficult to secure, and the state is placing a higher priority on funding sites within an ROZ. Staff recommends the city establish an ROZ for the city and port-owned brownfield properties in the area shown on Exhibit A. There are eight MTCA cleanup sites located within the proposed ROZ. And I am going to turn this over to Tara Sardine, our Community and Economic Development Manager.
Thank you. Well, the summary, it really is as simple as the summary states. So I don't need to repeat that part, but why don't I list out these sites that we're talking about? These are, these are properties that either the city owns or the port owns that are considered brownfield sites. And so what we've done is included all those in the waterfront districts. So the INJ Waterway, Central Waterfront, Georgia Pacific West, Watcom Waterway, RG Haley, and Cornwall Avenue Landfill, plus the city's adding South State Street Manufactured Gas Plant and our Holly Street Landfill. And the reason for doing that is, right now, the benefits that we're seeing is is the state's going to prioritize funding requests, MOTCA, MTCA. We call it MOTCA sometimes. So we definitely need to do this so that we can be prioritized for Haley and some of those sites that aren't already cleaned up. The Holly Street Landfill, as you probably know, that site has been cleaned up. But we want to leave kind of our options open in case the state comes up with some other benefits for redevelopment opportunity zones beyond just prioritizing MOTCA funds. The Port Commission took action last Monday and have consented to including their properties, which is also a requirement of the state statute. So with this, with you passing this resolution, we will have this area designated. And then Amy and Brian Port can go ahead and make application.
Thank you, Tara. And if anybody is curious at home, that Exhibit A is in our packet. So that is online if anybody wants to actually look at those. Councilmember Murphy, then Hammel and Luliquist.
I'd just like to move that we pass the resolution to establish the Bellingham Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity Zone.
Second, excuse me.
Comments, discussions?
Yeah, I'm going to support this, but I just want to clarify. This is just basically like a reclassification to align with the state funding. There's no material difference in what the activities are for the MOTCA sites. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And this will, this will not show up as like some boundary overlay that the city has to confuse things. This is more, just kind of more background. And is needed to go to the state with that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Luliquist.
Sorry, I'm going to be supporting this as well. I do have two itty-bitty small comments. Actually, I found Exhibit A not that clear. It's in grayscale in the packet. It wasn't clear to me if and where there was a boundary. It maybe doesn't matter, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell. I thought the dark part in the middle was the zone. I didn't realize the outerlying areas were part of the zone. So that just confused me. And also, just wondering, Georgia Pacific West, Georgia Pacific left long ago, and I'm just wondering if we have a, can look for another name going forward that, you know, can live with, you know, you called it the extension of the downtown. We call it the downtown waterfront in other documents. You know what I'm saying? So do we refer to Georgia Pacific West when we're referring to the cleanup site? And we call it downtown waterfront when we're referring to post-cleanup, basically? Okay.
Councilmembers, anything else? Councilmember Parker?
Yeah, I'll also be supporting this. And I've been on a really fast learning curve, and I'm really thankful for the staff to keep up on these kinds of things so that we can get, it sounds like for grant funding and some other stuff. And I can't even imagine how you keep track of all that, but I'm certainly thankful that you all do. So I'll be supporting that this evening.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us to approve the resolution regarding establishing the Bellingham Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity Zone. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Tara. Okay. The next agenda item in front of us is the Watcom County EMS Funding Work Group Recommendation. The Watcom County EMS Oversight Board, which, by the way, this committee met almost every two weeks for an entire year. So a lot of work has gone into this, into these recommendations. The mission of the group is recommending a funding strategy and mechanism that will support and sustain a countywide EMS system. Staff will provide an update on the accomplishment of the EMS Funding Work Group and present to council the recommendations set forth by the EOB. And this presentation is going to be done by Chief Bill Newbold. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. And the purpose for my presentation today is information only, to share with you the actions and activities of the EMS Funding Work Group and the recommendations that we've put forth to the EMS Oversight Board. However, before I jump into the presentation, I put together a little crib sheet, if you will, that I think will help frame kind of where we are as a snapshot in time. If this pulls up like I think it should. I'm trying to zoom out. The sheet I handed out to you starts up here at the top. And then what I'm going to do is I want to call your attention right here in the middle section, as far as actions to date. And as was mentioned, we have since 2013, when we put together the EMS structure as it is today, there was the Technical Advisory Board and the EMS Oversight Board, or EOB, that was established. Last year, the EOB gave direction to establish an EMS Funding Work Group to look at some stable funding for EMS program going forward. And if you take a look here in the middle, that EMS Funding Work Group, we'll go through some of the members of that. But really, they put together four different subcommittees that you see here. And then from the work of the ALS and BLS Subcommittee that looked at the details of the delivery of the service and efficiencies, the EMS Administrative Subcommittee, which looked at the structure of an EMS system, the recommendations from those two subcommittees were put forth to the EMS Finance Subcommittee to then cost that out to determine what an appropriate levy amount would be for those recommendations. And together, all of that was compiled into what was called the Watcom County EMS Funding Work Group Recommendations, which the full document was attached in your packet. That, those recommendations have been presented to the EOB last month. And that presentation, which includes a high-level overview of the recommendations, is a presentation, oops, excuse me, the presentation that I'll present to you today, that the EMS Funding Work Group gave to the EOB. There we go. Thank you, Marie, for having this loaded up for me. So as I mentioned, the Funding Work Group was put together back in April 2015, and its mission was to recommend a funding strategy, or I'll characterize it as a sustainable funding strategy, to be able to provide the level of ALS service and BLS service currently that we do and to also be able to meet the future demands of the system. And when I talk about EMS, that's emergency medical services. That is a large umbrella for two different, two different levels of service. You'll hear me use BLS, which is basic life support. That's provided by our firefighters and EMTs. And ALS, which is advanced life support, which is provided by our paramedics for any life-threatening emergencies that occur throughout the area that we serve. This is an important slide here. The EMS Funding Work Group was made up of a large number of members throughout the county, representing county administrative and council through Tyler Schroeder and also Barry Buchanan on their council. We also had Brian Heinrich and Terry Borneman from the City Council. There was a number of fire chiefs representing the fire districts throughout the county. The small cities were also represented by the mayor of Linden. We also had fire commissioners throughout the county that were represented on this. The public at large through Patricia Dunn, Finance Citizen Representative. And then also, we had myself and Chief Gary Russell, who represent the two current ALS providers. So this group really got together and worked collaboratively to put forth the recommendations. Just a brief history to bring you up to date where we are. We just celebrated our 40th anniversary two years ago. Many of you might have attended that, where we celebrated 40 years of EMS service here in Watcom County. And that system grew over time. In early 2000, became a tiered response system, which I described earlier, BLS and ALS, and to where it is today. During that time, we've looked at different methods of structure and also financing the EMS services. As of most recent, the current contract that we're in with the county, which was a 2013, or excuse me, 2014, 15, 16 contract, was developed out of the ordinances in the county and the city for our current level of service. The summary of the recommendations from the EMS Funding Work Group is to, first off, was to analyze the resources needed to continue and sustain the level of services that we currently provide throughout the county, city of Bellingham, our other municipalities, and throughout the entire county. And then also look at with the prioritization of fully funding ALS services. Those are the life-threatening emergencies that the paramedics respond to under the ALS system and to support our local fire agencies, whether that be fire districts, fire authority, or municipal fire departments, who provide that basic life support in conjunction with the advanced life support. The task group, or the Funding Work Group, also looked at all the different costs, funding options available, structures, efficiencies, and where we could, different savings moving forward. One of the things that we recognize is without additional funding, the ALS system will be reduced below the current level of service. This comes because of two reasons. One is our continuing growth and demand for the services, which is one of the areas that we looked at efficiencies. Also, the way that the system is currently being funded and operating out of the reserves that we've put together currently. We do recognize that efficiency must be realized. There's some areas there through dispatch, community paramedic programs, which we're familiar with here that we've recently put in place that are having some impacts, and other programs that we can utilize to reduce the long-term system costs. One of the things that we recognize is a successful EMS levy, we want to put central, centralized oversight under an EMS administration, if you will, outside of the two current providers, so that there is a centralized EMS administration that manages the contracts with the ALS providers. That's a system that's been recognized as a very workable structure throughout Western Washington. There's many counties throughout here that do operate under this model and has provided to be the most sustainable. The items that the Funding Work Group endorsed, number one was a six-year EMS levy. There's three options with that. There's a six-year, a 10-year, and a permanent levy underneath the RCW. The Funding Work Group endorses a six-year levy per the RCW. The Finance Subcommittee, with the recommendations that were made from the two previous subcommittees, came up with a 29.5 cent per thousand assessed valuation, and then looking at placing this on the ballot in 2016. Kind of the how this works is, in providing those items with the stable funding and the 29 cent, 29.5 cents that we looked at, is that this will provide a level of sustainability while still maintaining the sales tax and the transport fees. Currently, the system is financed by the two items here, sales tax and transport fees, as well as revenue, or sorry, as well as funding from both the general funds of the county and the city. And then so the 29.5 cent sales tax is what we're looking at to provide a stable funding going forward. It'll point a full-time, system-wide EMS It'll appoint a full-time, system-wide EMS administrator, have responsibility for a level of financial reserve, sustainable financial policies. And one of the areas that we always want to continue to develop is our data collection, and that will also inform us on efficiencies as we move forward. The basis for this, with all the recommendations that were put forward by the ALS/BLS Subcommittee and the EMS Administration Subcommittee, came out with about a $1.82 million per unit. Currently, we have four units serving Watkin County, two here in the city, two in the county. They serve region-wide, and this will put that expense at $1.82 million per unit. It also includes a reserve. As the timeframe of the six-year levy develops, it will include sufficient reserves to put a fifth unit in service during the latter portion of the levy period to meet our anticipated growth and the current demands that we have on the system. It will continue to pay for EMS dispatch fees for various fire agencies, also including the ALS and the BLS dispatch fees, and then support to the BLS programs, which are our fire service providers, through equipment exchange programs, basic life support training, electronic patient care reporting, or EPCR that we refer to. This sheet goes into further detail of the various line item expenses on how we arrived at a $1.82 million per unit. And then also shows that currently, leading from the four units that we currently have in 2016, continuing that through the first portion of the six-year levy, and then ultimately seeing the need to put a fifth unit in service near the latter part of the levy. And this is just a page two of that, and the calculations come out with a 29.5 cent EMS As far as some further timeframe, if you go back to that crib sheet, you'll see some of the work that's been done in the past. This one just provides it in a little bit more detail. Kind of, excuse me. Where we are to date is we've made the one presentation to the EOB. There will be a second presentation to the EOB, where we'll be requesting action from the EOB for their endorsement to move this levy forward with its current amount or upon their review of a different amount. There is also the information that we are providing to both the City Council and the County Council. We'll also be providing this presentation to the fire chiefs and fire commissioners, and then also, I understand, with the small cities. So where we are right now is the information stage of providing this. And then in order for this to be put forward on a ballot, it needs both a resolution from the City of Bellingham Council, and then also a resolution from the County Council per RCW to be able to put this on the ballot. The timing is laid out such that we know the timing coming forward of the general election, of when we have to have this filed in the auditor's office. And so, that's the steps that we're taking today with that. That concludes the high-level overview of the work that's been done. And I really want to stress, when you go back and you look at that signature page, the work that's been done by so many parties and individuals to make this happen. This is my first time around the block with an EMS levy here in Watkin County. I do have experience with it down in King County. And from what I've heard of histories and how we've developed here in a county, what I can tell you is the work that was done and the way it was done in this EMS Funding Work Group between the county, the city, the fire agencies, the small cities, all those representatives, I'll characterize, in my words, as unprecedented. The level of collaboration, it's just been outstanding. So a lot of kudos to all the folks who made a lot of effort in that.
Thank you, Chief. And you're right, this is extraordinary that you got all these people together and came up with solutions that they could all live with. And thanks for the committee. And with that, Councilmember Bornhamon, maybe you would like to add a little bit in regards to your experience and...
Yeah, I have to agree with Chief on this one. This isn't my first levy. I went through, I went through the battles before and have set through this one. And this process was extraordinary. And I got to say, it was not an easy process. We ended up coming to unanimity, but we didn't start off that way at all. There were a lot of differences when we started this process. I sat on the ALS/BLS, because basically, I needed to educate myself on that. I figured the administration, they can figure out that process, but I wanted to be on that process so I would fully understand it. And it's a complicated, the process that we went through was a very complicated process and an educational process for many of us. And there were a lot of differences throughout it, and we were able to have civilized conversations. Sometimes it would get heated, but we maintained and we worked through. There was a lot of give and take. We found areas to compromise. There were concerns by some that evidence that was given, like for a fifth unit, was anecdotal evidence. So instead of leaving it at that, Chief assigned people to put together the data to back up what we were trying to need to sell to the voters. So this is not just the fire department saying this is what we need. This is, has been, the data has been collected, it has been verified that this is at what point we will come on with the fifth unit and how this will happen. Right down to the last meeting of the Finance Committee, where we were still debating about the levy amount, because we were thinking we would need 30 cents, because we wanted to fully fund the cost of training for the new members coming on. In the past, that has not been done. We kind of, you know, sucked it up and paid for that. And for some people, trying to understand why it's so expensive to train EMS, we had to go through that process. But we came up with a compromise at 29, and we could do it at 29.5 by using the reserve funds. At the time of the training, we would be able to draw from reserve funds to fund that. And with that, we were able to get by the last hurdle with this. One of, a couple of things that came, that are included in this, I think are very important for us to understand, is under the current funding program, the city is currently subsidizing the program to about $1.2 million a year out of general funds. The county, about $1.4. But also, for us, why this is equal, and this will be rolled into the levy, so that this will be sustainable funding that funds the program without us needing to subsidize, without the county. It gets us out of that. And I think it's really important, when you look at the current funding, the one-tenth of a percent, is kind of equally distributed countywide. The county's portion, even though it's called county, encompasses the full population in the county. So everybody in the city also contributes to their general fund to pay for it. When it comes to the city's part, that's only us. So we have an added fund over and above everybody else with it. So it's even more important why we want to see this funded this way. Because of all the work that has gone into this, I mean, by bringing all the different partners in and getting everyone to agree that this is a process that we can, we can go with and we can go out to the public to educate, I think it's something that's going to be really important that we get behind, because it is something that, one, Emergency Medical Services are so important to this whole community, and we want to keep a unified system. We don't want to have to have a split kind of system with this. Originally, we were going, I was going to ask to direct staff to bring back a resolution and to ask you to support me asking them to bring back a resolution for the next meeting. But in terms of talking with Brian and Chief, we realized, you know, this is a complicated document. And instead of doing that, of asking for that next week, what we want to do is set this over for another work session, so it gives people a chance to read through this document. If you have any questions of me, or of Chief, or Brian, I'm sure any of us would be glad to talk through any of these portions, these different elements, because some of it's pretty complicated, and there's reasons why we got to this. And so, I just want to throw that out there, that this is what we decided we wanted to do, is set it over for next week, so people have a chance to really study this. And at that time, I will probably be asking for your support for this. But, and I just want to throw one other thing. If we would have, if this process would have been carried out last year on the jail, we would probably be looking at moving forward with it by bringing, like, city council members, county council members on that, bringing in all those people and went through that kind of a process. But this time, it was done, I think, right. It brought most of the stakeholders together at the same table where we were able to sit face-to-face and discuss what our concerns were, discuss, you know, and to educate each other about what's involved with this. So that's, that's what I've got to say. Any questions, glad to ask.
Thank you. And I think if I got that in order... I'm not on. Was Mayor Kelly and Councilmember Knutson and Lillquist, was that right? Did I get that right? Okay.
And I was, I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, I agree with everything that Chief Newbold and Terry said, and I want to thank them and Brian Heinrich and our internal staff for keeping up with all of this, because it is very, very complicated, and the process was great. Having said that, I also think that when you have a process that works and is an advantage to everyone in the county, and that has the level of agreement that it has, that this is something that we should adopt. And I will look forward to Terry making his motion to have us develop a resolution to send to the county, because there is no reason to waste this moment on a process and a product that turned out so well and that benefit the public. So I had, I just had that to reinforce what everybody else has said.
Councilmember Knutson.
Yes, as exciting as our last topic was, this is exciting also, because just a few years ago, as Terry will remember, a unified system didn't look possible. It was dead on arrival. And now, look where we're at on this, and it's, kudos to everybody working on the city and the county, but it just shows you, if everybody's working on the same page, what you can do. And I think, you know, as bleak as the jail issue looks like, here's another example of how you can do it. So thanks to everybody.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Thank you. I, Terry, you said you'd like to see us get behind it. I think I can get behind it. This is not a new issue. We have been seeing for several years now, you know, where the finances have been headed. And the process was started quite a while ago. Well, first, there was that little sidetrack with the EMS system being kind of blown up and put back together again. But looking at the financial picture, the long-term picture, how many ALS units, I'm really glad that we look forward, because, I mean, looking at this spreadsheet now, at the end of, or the beginning of 2017, we could be down to $300,000 in reserves. This is out of a $6 million a year total EMS cost. That's, you know, that's like a couple of weeks of operation. You don't run a multimillion-dollar system on fumes like that. And so, it's time to put more gas in the tank. And we've seen the fuel gauge running low, the way to put fuel back in the tank and keep it filled up would be this kind of levy. So, and I think, I'm really glad it came forward at this particular moment, because I think this should be part of our long-range financial discussion that we've been talking about with regard to levels of service and our general fund, because, as Terry points out, it's a $1.2 million drain from our general fund that the City of Bellingham puts in, while our taxpayers are already putting in through their own county taxes. And this is one more way that I think we can adequately fund basic public safety needs that also puts the city on a firmer foundation financially going forward. So I see a lot of reasons to get behind this, and I look forward to the work session to ask a few more questions.
Councilmember Bornhamon.
Yeah, there was one other element I just wanted to touch on and just mention, because I think it is so important, because it's something that's come up with the jail and with, and with this one. We, we looked at and have implemented within this, looked at innovations that could be put in place to reduce call levels, so that we can put off the need to fund a fifth unit as long as, as possible. Like, how to clarify and make it clear, the dip, when calls come in between ALS and BLS, the use of community paramedics, other things. We looked at those elements within our committees, within the ALS/BLS committees, so that we could, when we talk to taxpayers, we can say that we have tried to, to make this as lean as possible, that we've looked at strategies that will improve wherever we could see them. And that was an important part of this process, so I just wanted to mention that that was done.
Councilmember Murphy.
I just wanted to say, Councilmember Bornhamon, I would have been happy to support this today because of the great process. Let this be the model, because that's what creates the better assurances for us as the decision-makers. So thank you so much for all this work.
We just want to make sure that everybody's questions answered, because this is so important to the community.
I agree. I probably would have supported this today. I've read this very thoroughly and asked Terry a lot of questions. And the fact that all of these people came together and found an agreement, that in itself says a lot. So I think you're going to find very positive support for this resolution when you bring it forward. Councilmember Hammel.
I'm just trying to clarify how this differs from our Regional Fire Authority. Does it take the place of that, or is it in addition to you, or...
No, this is, if you will, a totally separate animal from the Regional Fire Authority. This is a service that's provided by an entity, whereas the Regional Fire Authority is a organizational structure of a governing body. And so, they may end up blending paths if both of those exist in the future, but two separate issues right now for consideration. Good question.
Chief, is there anything else that you...
Yes, as we, as we've heard, some of the words up here, you know, partners, people, process, et cetera. One of the things to really point out, as successful as we've been, you know, a lot of us in administration and putting this together may think that we're extremely smart and be able to pull this off. What was really integral to this was the folks that are the boots on the ground and those that are delivering the service, both our paramedics and our firefighters, which are represented by the labor groups. And if you look at this list, you also see two from each of the represented labor groups throughout Watkin County, both the IFF and the Fire Protection District 7 Labor Organization. They really provided a lot of insight. These folks represented themselves on this group, and that they'll be working with their constituents back in their organizations, just as we are, for the support. So it really was everybody coming together on that.
Thank you, Chief. And to all the people who are on this list, thank you for working together and being open-minded and being collaborative. I think this is, you know, Oversight Committee is probably a great template. Maybe we couldn't use this for the jail discussion. And that is for information only at this time, unless there's anybody else who has comments or questions? No? Okay. We're going to move on to our sixth, I think we're on our sixth item right now for committee. This is a resolution adopting a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. In March 2016, the Watkin County Council adopted a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles for Watkin County's criminal justice and behavioral health systems. The County Council called on other legislative authorities that have a stake in our shared criminal... criminal justice system to adopt the same or similar statements as soon as possible. The resolution adopts the Bellingham City Council's statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. And our presentation is going to be by Mark Gardner, our analyst.
Good afternoon. Speaking of cooperative processes, I believe this is the effort of the county council to send us a resolution and statement, and what you see is a modified version of that. The county council on March 8th adopted their resolution and statement, and as I mentioned, this is basically modified from that. The process that produced the county's version was a couple of months incoming. It actually involved some members of our council, members of the Lemmy Nation, and it was, involved some other consultation around the county. And the idea is to kind of try to set a solid, agreed-upon set of principles for moving the process forward, given that the last process didn't work so well. And in terms of what's in your pocket, as staff, we followed kind of a surgical approach of trying to keep with the spirit of what the county was calling for, which was a substantially similar set of documents. And in that regard, the changes are basically grammatical or logical changes to make it appropriate for the City of Bellingham rather than the county council. And I worked with Peter Raffado of the Legal Department to do that kind of surgical editing. There is one thing I would like to add. Peter noted that we had missed one, just kind of an editing item, and that's on the statement itself. If you go to the Statement of Principles on Incarceration Prevention, number eight, it currently starts out as "we will locate any new jail facility where it can work best for all our partners," et cetera. It would make more sense to say "we will support the location of any new jail facility where it can work best for all our partners." That's just trying to be grammatically consistent and logical. So, basically, the idea is that the county council produced an aardvark, and so the idea here is to produce a Bellingham-centric, slightly-modified aardvark. However, this is your resolution and statement. If you want to produce a zebra, you can. But we wanted to start with something as substantially similar as possible. Just a couple of substantive notes, that there were a couple of somewhat substantive changes, both of them regard to, are in regard to location of facilities. Numbers eight and nine in the Statement of Principles, the first one, number eight, refers to the location of the jail. Number nine refers to the location of the, excuse me, the work release facility. In both cases, I modified the language to be just somewhat more neutral regarding location, because, either because there was not consensus on this body regarding the location of the jail, or there hasn't been a full discussion of precisely what this council would prefer to see with regard to the work release facility. So, those are the only two substantive changes, kind of just a shift on emphasis, not a major change in terms of the content of the statement. And I just wanted to mention also that this, it was a substantially streamlined version of a resolution that was originally circulated and considered by the county council. They didn't really have the support to pass the much longer one, which included a broader set of issues, but there was also concern that if it was written in a different way, it would provide clearer direction to their executive. So, I think the idea behind this is to get all the jurisdictions saying, "We support the county council and moving forward in this way." Just to briefly summarize some of the elements of the statement portion that follow the resolution, these, some important elements are that planning should be focused on breaking the cycle of incarceration. Criminal justice facilities should be shared across jurisdictions. There's a recognition of the role of the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. There's support for funding community-based prevention services. Regarding the size of the jail, it should be based on comprehensive analysis of criminal justice policy, including innovations in prevention, alternatives, behavioral health, and reentry support. Construction and operating costs will be apportioned fairly among jail users based on actual use or best estimates of actual use. And it also calls for the county to issue an RFP for a criminal justice planner. So, those are just some of the larger elements that appear in the statement itself. So, that's what we've done. We've modified this, and it's for your consideration. It's your resolution and your statement, so you might want to adopt it as is or make modifications.
After the council, I have.
After? Okay. And I wasn't sure who was first there. Was, okay, so Councilmember Murphy.
I'd just like to move that we pass the resolution adopting a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, discussion. Councilmember Lillquist.
Oh, was it Hamel? I'm sorry. Sure. I caught the same edit that Mark caught on item eight. I think there's another one on item 10. It says, "We will apportion construction." So, we're not actually doing that, but we would support that. Correct. So, I would just, you know, move to amend the motion to include the "we will support" on item 10, and "we will support locating the new jail" on item eight, that language.
Peter, do you have any comments on what Councilmember Hamel just said?
If the motion doesn't have to be amended, I mean, it's just grammatical.
Your main motion will be this evening, so we can take that. If that's a guidance or the direction, then it can be done this evening.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Lillquist.
I, first of all, happy to support the change in language, and even happier to support the county council with this resolution. It has the broader focus, I think, that was creating so many concerns for many of us on the jail. As much as we didn't dispute the need for a new, safer, better jail, we just felt like it was the only thing in the discussion, and the rest of it was missing. What I really appreciate about this is the broad focus. The jail is one large part of the picture, but not the entirety of the picture. So, I'll be supporting this resolution tonight.
Councilmember Barker.
On the third paragraph on the first page, it's the second sentence, and it says, "We should strive for conditions where the cycle of incarceration is broken rather than perpetuated." And I would just, I guess, motion that we strike the word "should," because I feel like we've already been doing that, and we're going to continue to do it. "Should" is a little bit of a mushy language to me, and so that would be one suggestion. The other is, you know, having read the original, and I really appreciate the language in this one, there was, when you come away with an issue like this, there's some emotion involved, and I think it took a lot of the emotional language out of it. However, in, on item eight, the second sentence, I'm a little uncomfortable, and I would just need more explanation, because the way I interpret, we need to examine the facts behind the decision to locate the jail in Ferndale. I guess I just, does anybody have, did you help on this? Do you know? To me, it sounds a little emotional or biting, that we, in some way, assume that we weren't told the facts of that. And I felt like there were, well, I felt like there were facts, and we do say later that we want to have the criminal justice planner, and we need to talk about jail location and size. And it already says in that sentence, "We will locate any new jail facility." I just don't know if that language is really necessary, but I could be reading a motion into a thing that's not there. So, I guess I'd like some discussion back on, did you, did any of you read it that way?
What line is that one in again?
It's eight, the second sentence. We need to examine the facts behind the decision.
I'm willing to support leaving that language in there. Councilmember Murphy?
Well, I'd just like to say, we need to constantly examine the facts about where a jail was located, so that's why I'd like to leave it.
Anyone else with, yeah, Councilmember Lillquist.
I think the language is neutral enough, and it does capture some of the concerns that I have heard expressed by county council members. And this document is based upon their documents, and I'd rather like to change it as little as possible.
That's helpful. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? No? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor Lindell.
So, if you look on the resolution page, one, two, three, four, five, "be it further resolved," where it talks about the ever-escalating costs, and "time is of the essence," and "get a proposal to the voters as soon as possible." On the face of it, that looks just fine. In the context of what the county executive proposed at Tuesday's meeting, I have some concerns about that being one of our goals, because I really believe that we all want it to be right, not quick. And there is a potential recommendation by the county executive that we are going to put something on the ballot in September. And if we could get a group together and we could decide it all, that would be great. But I don't know if getting it to the voters as soon as possible fits in with the request or the comments that the executive made on Tuesday. If he hadn't made those, you know, there wouldn't be any other meaning. But I guess I just want the council to consider if your goal is to do it as quickly as possible.
Would another word feasible, or something other than possible?
Yeah, reasonable.
Reasonable? Maybe that's a good idea.
That wouldn't change all the wording, but it would certainly not mean that we're rushing without all the information we need.
I'm just going to throw out a comment here. In reading through all of this this weekend, you know, I believe we can support this resolution, and definitely support the county goals, and it's definitely progress in regards to collaboration on the jail proposal. One concern I have is action items, and who's doing what, and how we're going to do it, instead of just, you know, paper going back and forth between councils. And I really like the process of the EMS Oversight Committee went through, and if the county were to suggest an Oversight Committee for the jail, I would definitely support it. In fact, I'd be willing to serve on it. But in the meantime, I think the City of Bellingham needs to get our ducks in a row, so that when we come to the table, we're all in the same place. And I'd like to propose a motion about that, but I'm going to hold that until this vote is closed, and then I'll throw that out there. So, just wanted to, Councilmember Bornerman.
Yeah, a response to what Mayor Kelly had. Kind of wonder if we, about possibly changing that one, the "be it further resolved," and if we were to change it to "time is of the essence for drafting a new collaborative proposal to put before the voters as soon as possible." Because that's what we're, we don't want to see the same, and we will not, and we cannot support the same proposal that was out there, just to get it before the voters. What we want, I think, what I want, and I hope I can speak for the rest of the council, is we want to see a new collaborative proposal put before the voters that works for all the jurisdictions.
And in my mind, it's dealing with all the change in the criminal justice system, including incarceration, and not just incarceration. So, I have no, I mean, you guys can figure out how you want to say it, but I just don't want to look like we're agreeing to rush into something.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. So, Councilmember Lillquist and Hamel, did you each have your hand up? Did I get that correctly?
Well, I would just say that I like Terry's proposal, and if he wants to draft language, I'm sure I'll find it acceptable.
Same.
Okay. So, Councilmember Bornerman, do you want to repeat that?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we change the language on that to "time is of the essence for drafting a new collaborative proposal to put before the voters," or, yeah, something like that, "as soon as possible."
As soon as reasonable.
Second.
So, Peter, help me out in regards to, do we vote on the amendment and then vote on the entire resolution? Is that how we go through the process now? Okay. So, is there any comments or discussions on the amendment? Councilman?
Councilwoman Lindell.
Mayor Lindell.
I'll sit up there when he wants to come down here. The word "feasible," I think, is a good word. And I don't know, Terry, if you use feasible.
No, that would be, that would, yeah. No, I think that would be better. Yes, thank you.
So, we have a motion, which has been seconded in front of us, and it's an amendment to the resolution in wording to change the timeline of the resolution to a feasible proposal. Is that, am I reiterating that correctly, or?
Change impossible to feasible.
Possible to feasible.
Or however it fits into Terry's.
Right.
Yep.
Is everyone on, are we all on the same page?
People have been writing tonight.
Okay.
Peter's going to write it up for you anyway. Yeah.
Mark's going to write it up.
Mark's going to write it up.
Somebody can write it up.
All right. So, the, we are, we are going to vote on the amendment to the resolution around the timeline. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to the resolution carries seven zero. We are now going to return back to the resolution at hand and vote on the overall resolution, which will include the amendment this evening. All those in favor, yeah, I'm sorry.
Could I, just wanted to make sure you're okay with, I think what you've just done makes that consistent with what the county was saying, but also your own concerns. But I just want to note, there's a specific date mentioned on number 13. It says November 17th. There was some discussion with the county whether it would be possible to do it this year. I think the consensus was mostly that it would not be, and so that they did put that in there. So, just want to make sure this council is okay with that being there.
The county put it there.
Yeah.
Leave it.
Well, I personally think that if we can't get our ducks in a row and have a decision by next year, we've got bigger problems. And we need to have a deadline.
Yeah. Yeah, I can.
And, yeah. So, I think it is prudent for there to be a deadline in there, so everybody knows that we are going to make an agreement. Any other comments or thoughts on that date? No?
Leave it.
Okay. So, right now, we are, sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, just to be clear, I think it was done by consensus, but this motion will include those sort of grammatical changes to sections eight and 10, in terms of using the word "support." I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that. So, we are voting now on a resolution with the intended grammatical changes that will be included this evening, and also the amendment to the timeline. And this is the resolution adopting a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So, before we go on to our next committee topic, I want to propose a motion in regards to having us prepared to have these kinds of conversations. My motion is to ask the mayor to direct the staff to compile a list of available options using the county resolution goals as our guide for a comprehensive approach to meeting the city's needs for the jail, which should include funding options, jail alternatives, and diversion needs. So, and report back at the earliest convenience. Would that be? Mayor Lindell?
Yeah, thank you, President Vargas. Yeah, we, you know, there's been a lot of talk about what are we going forward with, and I think your suggestion is very prudent, because it would be nice for all of us to be on the same page, especially if the direction is for me to go talk to the county executive about something. I'd like to know what the council is supporting, and make sure that I am doing a good job of representing what we want. So, we already have some of this in the works, but this is a nice direction for us.
Councilmember Lillquist.
I'll second this, because I think, Kelly says it right, the administrations are doing excellent work, and is already leading on many of these things. I don't think we're asking her to do, and her staff to do, much more than they're already doing. I think we're asking to be put together in light of this, these planning principles, and kind of brought forward, kind of in a package. Is that? and kind of brought forward, kind of in a package, is that, as I'm understanding it? So, I would second your motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members, comments, thoughts? Okay, thank you for your willingness and the staff's time to do this. I think it will give us a much clearer discussion. I know Executive Louse has been concerned because there's lots of feedback that's coming and it's not all unified. So, this might help us get to that place in the discussion. So, the motion in front of us, which has been seconded, is a staff compilation of a comprehensive approach to meeting the city's needs for the jail, which will include funding options, jail alternatives, and diversion needs, and no timeline but as soon as possible. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mayor Lindell?
Thank you very much. And I had Peter put together for me the actual specific language that went back to the county because I hear that concern a lot, that we didn't send something back that was specific, and we did. And so, we'll share that with you so that you have that information. And it doesn't matter now, that activity is over, but I think it forms a basis, the information forms a basis for what you just asked for.
Question. Councilmember Barker?
In that staff recommendation that you bring back, I remember that the Police Guild, as well as the Firefighter Union, they kind of did a campaign at the end, and I think it influenced a lot of people on not voting for the jail. They had some really specific concerns, and I would be interested in making sure that those concerns are also brought to us.
And I think what we can do because, excuse me, because of all of your interest in what the public thinks is, there's nothing that keeps you from reaching out to these people and asking what they think. Thank you, April.
Thank you. And that is, is there anyone else that has any comments or anything, feedback on that? Okay, so, we will move to our last committee item today. It is the current anticipated service delivery models. The administration is considering strategies to continue to provide sustainable services for the community into the future. The proposed strategies, in conjunction with ongoing efforts to seek operational efficiencies, will allow more time for options to be identified, discussed, and potentially implemented. There's an attached worksheet which highlights the operational challenges without identified new sources of revenue or efficiencies. And this is for information only and from Mayor Lindell.
It's one of ours, I thought we kind of already did it.
Or maybe it's Brian, yeah.
Flip a coin.
Let's let him do it. You go ahead.
Good to see you again, councilmembers. This is a continuation, somewhat indirectly, from our prior discussion looking at long-term strategies. In doing that, we acknowledge that it will take time to prepare the appropriate approach to vet it with both the council and the community, determine how to proceed and to implement it fully. And during that period of time, the central concern for the administration is clearly to keep the high level of services we provide and serve the community. That being said, even a status quo approach going forward has consequences. As the city grows at two percent or so a year, as we see increased uses and demands on our services, if you hold the line, services increase, demands increase, and therefore the level of service decreases. We're aware of that, and we realize that it's a gradual change, but we wanted to make council aware of the sort of going forward, what that approach might be and what that effect might be on the community. It doesn't mean that we won't endeavor to find every way to maintain the level of service we have now, but it is possible, without some short-term successes, that we might see a slower erosion as we investigate the long-term solution. Some might say that's a significant motivator to work hard on those long-term solutions, and I'd agree with that. But the purpose here is not to use it as a threat, but more of an awareness that we'll be working very hard to find ways to maintain the service during the interim and creative ways.
Okay, I'll follow up. So, when we talked about this idea that we might wanna look at the status quo, we asked every department head to explain to us possible things that could happen if we weren't able to find all the solutions that we're gonna be looking for, for the level of service in the budget. So, that's what this is. This is just a compilation of what department heads said. May, they could anticipate if we don't do anything, could be the consequences or the impacts. Now, when I read through this, there's quite a few of them that aren't acceptable to me. So, I am very motivated, Mr. Sepler, to find other solutions. But I thought it was fair to share with you what the department head said, not as a way to frighten anybody, but just as a way to be realistic, that this is a serious issue that we've tried for the last four years and done a good job in making a lot of changes. And now, we're at the point where in the next two years, we have two years to kind of step up and do the things we need to do. So, that's what this is. And Rick's right, it's might have to, not will do. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And I think we're entering a period where there'll be some discomfort. I think this body is, commonly sees your administration and department heads come and offer solutions to you for you to consider in way and make a choice to address a problem. This is one where collectively, we have to develop those solutions. We don't have them in hand, and that causes discomfort for us because we like to be able to provide you with answers you make a good choice from. Perhaps discomfort for you because wouldn't it be nice to have laid out the right path to go? We're not certain, there are many things that are out there. But we don't wanna create any confusion for the community, and that is, their service to them is the number one priority in any aspect as we go forward.
I just wanna say, I really like the way this was laid out. And for the public, if you are curious about some of the level of service discussions that we're having, I think this layout of what the department heads say about what's happening in the departments, what their needs are, what they can live and live without, is a really great foundation for understanding what the things we're up against and what we wanna achieve in the city going forward. So, thank you for presenting this material this way. Councilmember Lillquist?
Thanks, Mickey. Yeah, I wanna thank the administration. This is one more good piece in the larger puzzle, the discussion that we're having. You said it wasn't meant to be threatening or frightening. It was a little bit threatening and frightening, frankly. And as Kelly said, I think that kind of anxiety is a good motivator for us to do a good job. As I understand it, Peter Moy of FCS had an option one, and the option one is no new revenues we try to live with in our current revenue stream. And this, I think, is basically fleshing out what option one would look like. Is that a good assessment?
That is correct.
Councilmember Barker?
I'm glad we're going through this now because I know the comprehensive plan and finalizing that will come up. And I guess I kind of look back to the public school structure and when they decided to start cutting things, they started cutting things like art and music. And we've done some of that here in Bellingham with our city, like cutting library. I mean, something that is so impactful on the health of a community. And so, I think we're gonna be looking at some great language, hopefully, in the comprehensive plan about the partnerships, about integration, about what makes a healthy community, because certainly when you don't have that integration in populations, we know that things like high school dropout rates increase, health disparities and problems increase. And so, I am hoping that as we look at this really difficult stuff, there's a really broader umbrella of us growing to become a healthy community. And I know the Wacom Department of Health has come in and tried to put some language inside our comprehensive plan. And I would just hope that eventually we could keep a higher level of service because we haven't created communities that aren't set up for success and that are having to utilize systems a little bit more than others. So, and maybe not benefiting from other systems that they could be. So, I'm glad to see them both coming together, and I have a glass half-full, I think, perspective of seeing this in four to eight years, being part of something really great. So, thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Okay, this was for information only. That concludes committee of the whole for today. No? No, we have two minutes, but, sorry, the items on the committee. Yeah. No, we still have an executive session. So, next, we're gonna go to the approval of minutes. We have two minutes in front of us today. The first one is our committee meeting minutes from March 21st, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carries seven zero. And then, the next one is our special meeting minutes from the March 23rd Lake Wacom Cooperative Management Program with the joint council meetings.
Move approval.
Second.
Can I ask for one change to it? My comments in here says, my question was, will hiking trails interfere along shoreline with water quality? I was really asking about shoreline and along rivers. If we could just, or add riparian corridors. If we could just add that into, to describe my question a little better, I'd appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions? So, we are approving the minutes with the changes, grammatical changes that Councilmember Lillquist requested. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Older New Business. Councilmember Lillquist?
Under New Business, I sent around an email that had to do with Department of Ecology, which has made an announcement of request for public comment on two proposed rules on matters that the city council and the administration has already weighed in on. These are new rules on oil spill response plans, which we've been concerned with, and notification rules when there's oil movement through communities. And I asked the administration to look at these rules. I think they're already well aware of them, and see if we might want to, as a city, provide some public comment on those rules. So, I don't know, Brian, do you have any comments?
Yeah, quickly, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's office. There's two rules. One is a notice requirement for facilities receiving crude oil by rail and pipelines. The other is a contingency planning requirement for railroads that transport crude oil in bulk. And so, these, both of these rules are born out of House Bill 1449, which was passed in 15. Council did weigh in in support of that legislation, and this is essentially the natural process moving forward. We have until June 10th to provide comment, and in looking at this, what I might suggest is that the administration work on a comment letter for both rules, and we'll bring that back in a timely fashion for council to review and ideally sign on.
Chris? Could I suggest maybe that if any councilmembers have any burning comments that they would like to add to that, that they could forward that to Brian? Would that work for you, Brian?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Hamel?
Thank you, thank you. As part of my duties with the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force, I went last week to Seattle and Yakima. While I was in Seattle, I worked with the folks who work on the law enforcement assisted diversion program. They were actually featured in a frontline documentary that came out last month called Chasing Heroin. I don't know if folks have seen, that was a really outstanding documentary. The idea is to work with low-level drug offenders who possess seven or less grams and who are prostituting themselves to maintain a drug habit, and what they're seeing mostly down there is heroin and methamphetamine use. That program started in Belltown and is now used throughout the downtown area. So, the idea is that they work with the offender to see what the issue is versus solely on the offense, because I just kept recidivizing people through the system, it's very expensive. So, they work with the case managers, they get together every two weeks, public defenders, prosecutors, and the police. They look at the reasons why the person is committing the crime, and they come up with solutions around treatment options, housing, and basic needs. The cost of the program after the start of costs went away are $532 per person per month. The cost for the same type of crimes, crimes for non-program participants is $5,961 per person, so it's almost, it's like a tenfold savings. The next day, I went to Yakima. Bellingham misdemeanor inmates who are post-conviction and with seven or more days to serve on their sentences are transported to Yakima, and they're housed in the main jail facility. I just wanna clarify that. I think that we got news that they were gonna be housed in the new jail facility. That is not correct information. They're housed in the main facility. That facility holds 900-plus inmates. They're at 718 last week when I visited. Yakima Department of Corrections has contracts with 27 Western Washington jurisdictions, including Bellingham. There were 13 Bellingham-only inmates last week in the Yakima jail, and I did speak with two of them about their stays in the Yakima facility. Both presented to me that they had no issues in accessing their legal counsel or their families. Neither had specific complaints about being housed in the Yakima facility other than being in jail. One inmate had served time in both Wacom County Jail and the Yakima County Jail, and he presented to me that the Yakima facility was much less crowded and a quote-unquote "better place." And I think it had to do with some accessibility for outdoor and basketball and things like that that are not, that's not available in the Wacom facility. Yakima facility, or county, pardon me, Yakima County Jail is installing a Skype-type system and currently has telephones in the pods for inmate use. Both of those require a cost to the inmates or their families to pay for them, so it's not a free Skype or a free phone call. Did wanna thank Director Ed Campbell and Chief Scott Heims for sitting down with me and letting me tour the facility and ask questions.
You, Councilmember Hamel. Is there anyone else for Older New Business? Councilmember Barker?
I recently attended a veteran summit that was held up at Western Washington University, and I learned a lot throughout that process and how I think we can better serve and communicate to our veterans. One interesting thing that came up is that there were several disabled veterans who were confused whenever they came to the city utilities to ask for a discount in the rates, and they were denied. I spoke with Brian and that confusion, and I think we got down to it where on the water utility bill, it says that for certain things, you are able to ask for a discounted rate if you are receiving social security disability. And the confusion that was coming through, or at least at some point when somebody spoke with staff, is that they, veterans don't receive social security disability, they receive disability from the VA. So, it sounds like the language is gonna get fixed on our bill, and hopefully, staff has now been educated on that, and then been able to reach out, so hopefully, the VA will be letting disabled veterans know. It was a bit of a barrier because SSC also follows whatever we do, so these same people were going to look for discounts at other services, and because they follow us, they weren't able to get those as well. So, I'm glad to see that that has been, or is being resolved, and I just wanted to make sure it's out there. So, if you do know somebody, a loved one, that's a veteran and receiving disability, they certainly can contact us for that.
Thank you, April. Anyone else? Older New Business? Okay, so, we are going to adjourn to executive session. It's going to be approximately 25 minutes. So, I will be back here to adjourn at 10 to 5, and we are going to executive session. Reminder that executive session are closed to the public, and there will be a report out in the regular meeting tonight. And we have two items for executive session, potential litigation, and labor relations bargaining strategy. 25 minutes, did I? Oh, 10 to 5, yeah. By the time we get in there, it's gonna take 25 minutes, so, yeah. So, yeah.